Welcome everyone to the February 21st Planning Board Meeting. Today on the agenda, we have review minutes from February 7th. Liz is going to do an update on the Housing Trust Committee. And then we have discussion of two proposed bylaws from Patrick White. It's one is the inclusionary residential inclusionary development bylaw. And the other is a proposed accessory dwelling you can't file off. So I will hand it over to Liz to do her present update.
Do you want to review the minutes first?
Oh, yes. I always forget the minutes.
I'm going to approve the minutes.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay, Liz, I'll hand it over to you.
Okay, I guess it means I have to do this. I'm going to try and make this a little shorter than I wrote out because I have a lot. We've had about five meetings. We started, this is the Affordable Trust Fund Housing Committee. We've had about five meetings since October, mid-October is when we started. We have, I will tell you who our members are. Our chair is Randy Warner, who has extensive experience in development, not only of regular housing, but she's done some affordable housing as well. Janet Ackerman, who's the vice chair and was the CFO of Yale. Don Eaton, who works with the CDC down in Great Barrington. Mark Mills, Michaela Donovan, Patrick White, representing the Select Board, and myself, representing the Planning Board. And I'm also their secretary. And we have very long meetings and it's long notes. We also have a board of advisors, Andrea Lindsay and Jim Welch from Eaton Court, June Wolf from Pinewood, and Rebecca Wendell from Riverbrook. So our focus has been on workforce housing and more affordable housing since we already breached our 10% affordable housing quota required by the state. To be eligible for state and public housing, your household income must be at or under 80% of the area median income. Stockbridge's median income about two years ago was $53,000. Our median age now is 65 years old. Those numbers are based on 2020. And at that time, we had 1,700 housing units. The median income in the Berkshires is $63,159, which is what the numbers for affordable housing are based on. So rent limits are based on people who are residents and are based on fair market rent. The poverty limit is calculated and limits are published by April. Utilities are included in the rent, included in the cost of the rent. So the rent minus utilities equals what their maximum rent is that they pay. What we did find, which was a little surprising to us, was that 25% of our school-aged children live at Pinewood. And if you think about when we grew up, that doesn't even make, it doesn't even make sense to me that, you know, they lived all over town. And now we seem to be more concentrated where we can afford to be. Another thing that was brought up was that we're really missing a demographic of age 20 to 40. So we're missing our volunteers for town offices, firefighters, EMTs, and people to work in town. So it's, when you think about what a house goes for in Stockbridge, you're not finding your first house here. They've just, they've gone up so exorbitantly. So we've been looking at what we have available now. We look at Pinewood, we look at Eaton Court. We haven't really, we don't really spend time at Riverbrook. We haven't spent much time there yet. But there are things that are in need in, certainly at Pinewood needs a lot of things addressed. There was a study done a few years ago that suggested that they do a structural engineering study, which hasn't been done yet. So we're trying to see if we can help in some way with that. And also maybe emergency things if a boiler blows or something that they need emergency funds for. We're looking for, we're learning, we have so much to learn. The amount of work that goes into this, the amount of grant funding and state and federal funds and tax credits and all the things that it takes to make these things happen. It's enormous. And for us, it's like, we were very lucky because we're not the first Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee to come, you know, to be in the Berkshires. So we actually have, we've had other people come in to speak to us. We've learned a lot. We've had Mary Beth Mitz from the Lennox Affordable Housing Trust, and she told us about how they do things. Ellen Pelter, who's the president and CEO of Berkshire Housing Development up in Pittsfield, and she has lots to help us with. We're also having a meeting on March 16th. Five towns that have affordable housing trusts. And we're going to sit down for six hours and talk about what they've done, what their challenges have been, how they've addressed them, and how they've gone about taking those steps. So far, Lennox has been the most helpful to us in terms of talking to us about how they're putting in 65 units behind the Marriott. It's a $30 million project. And Lennox only is paying $500,000 of it. So it's, these things are possible. The money's out there. There are developers who are out there, or there, you know, there are all different kinds of funds. But what, you know, it comes back down to, what do we need here? So we really need to do an assessment of the town and its needs. And that's something we're looking into in how to do it. We'd really like to help Pinewood with their things because it's, it's really, it's not in great shape. We know that the driveway is being done. And that's very helpful, but there are a lot of other things there that need to be done. They do have a really good tenants association and a great speaker who comes to talk to us all the time and lets us know what's happening. And she's, why, she has, she has a real career in doing things like this and pulling things together.
Is that the, the head of their tenants?
Yes.
What's her name?
If I could pull it out of my hat right now.
That's okay, sorry.
Maybe Patrick.
Joanna Linsky.
Thank you, Joanna Linsky. She's amazing. So we're looking, we're also looking for examples of how to provide affordable housing for the workforce. And different, you know, if you look, if you've read the paper lately, one of the more interesting things I thought that was happening was a group of people bought the Windflower Inn. And they're turning, it used to be one of our listings. And they turned it into affordable housing for workforce people so that they have a place to live, they have a place to cook, they have a bathroom, they have a room.
Where's that?
It's in South Aggarmont. It's the Windflower Inn. And I believe it has 18 rooms in the main house. It has a big commercial kitchen. It has lots of big common rooms. So they each have a bedroom and a bathroom. There's also another house or two on there. There's a garden, you know, there's a garden there.
Sort of like a compound?
It's kind of like a compound. And it gives people the chance to live somewhere, make a living, maybe put some money aside so that then they can either wait for more affordable rental units to come along that they can pay for, or maybe put a down payment on a house. So that's one of the more creative things I just wanted to mention. And I know we don't have a lot of time. But we do seem to have fewer full-time residents in place here, especially, you know, the people that we need. One of the things that came up was the fire department in Monterey really doesn't have many people to staff it. So they've started hiring people from outside of, you know, from other towns to cover nighttime because they don't have the manpower to do so. And that's something we may have to think about if we don't start bringing our, you know, some people back who want to take these positions. Our second homeowners are not going to do that. The median age of 65 is not jumping in to do it. So it's, you know, these are the things we're keeping in mind. So the question really is, how do we bring people in to bring the town back to filling up business, business positions? You go, I work in Lennox and the middle of the day is dead because there aren't enough people to staff a restaurant. So they only work five nights a week. And, you know, these are places that used to be open for lunch and dinner all the time. This is happening everywhere. It's not to say that this is just a Stockbridge problem or a Berkshire problem. This is a problem around the United States. And we've always kind of started things and done things ahead of other people. We kind of get on that horse and we do it. And I hope we can do it here because I would just hate to see this just become a tourist town. It is definitely, you know, we have people come here because it is so beautiful. And we will try and keep it that way. And you've got to do something to keep it alive. And that's what we're about. Any questions?
Good job.
A lot of work.
Yeah.
Nice.
Yeah, and I, it's interesting to watch. I watched one of the, one of the Housing Trust meetings and it's a real eye-opener to listen, and I highly recommend you watch, to listen to Joanne talk about the issues down at Pinewood. You know, they are, they are significant. So, you know, that's just something to consider. It seems like it was probably cheap construction, you know, from the get-go. So.
They generally are.
All right, so any questions?
How long has Pinewood been there?
Pinewood's still, Gary, do you remember?
15, 20 years ago.
I was going to say 20. They've been there quite a while.
20 years ago.
By that time, most things need fixing up.
So, let's see, so let's see. What about short-term rentals? Are you guys looking at the short-term rental bylaw? Because that's, you know, a lot of the sort of missing middle.
Right.
Properties that are along, like a prop, like my house would probably be something, you know, if I sold it, that would be bought by somebody interested in turning into a short-term rental. And it hasn't really appreciated that much because of the traffic from Tanglewood. So, you know, a lot of these properties along the main arteries are getting bought for short-term rental. And since we have, we don't have the requirement that the owner doing short-term rental be on site, that's, you know, we're seeing some of these properties go. So is that something that you guys are talking about?
We're not talking about it as much because there's, we haven't got, we've had so much as there is, I think, Select Board, and we might be talking about it because I think we have more power there. It certainly has affected, you know, the housing market here and everywhere else, especially, especially, I think, in rural areas, especially cultural rural areas.
Exactly.
You know, when you think about it, our children are used to using Airbnb's now. They don't go to hotels because should they have children, or just given the expense of eating out, it's really expensive these days to go on vacation. It's very expensive. So you have a kitchen, you have, you can have friends go in on the place. So it makes sense in that, I get that part. But there's got to be a way to limit the number of short-term rentals in a place so that that, you know, so that we still have the residential, you know, neighborhoods that we had to keep the characteristics, all the things that are written in here. The question is, how do you do that?
I mean, that's, you know, the short-term rentals, closing that loophole, that would be a very simple fix.
Yeah.
And I hope that's, I'm going to ask that you, you look at that, at the Housing Trust Committee. There's another really easy fix. And that is, you know, and the Planning Board can look at this too. In the resident central district, if a property is commercial on the first floor, you can't rent the second floor. And, you know, there's a question in my mind, why does that make sense?
Right.
Yeah. So, you know, a couple of years ago, the bylaw was changed such that in the business district, it used to be you could rent on the first floor by special permit. And that option was taken away. And that sort of seemed to me like, well, you know, now if you use the original Town Hall as an example, that property was in the process of being bought by someone who planned to use it to sort of live and have his office. Now he can't do that. So it's sort of that front part that he bought has sat empty. I mean, he's got a big Santa Claus in the window.
But the thing is, if you don't have the commercial space for people to run their businesses, you're not going to need help and young people in town because there's going to be no businesses.
Right, I think it was, you know, the way it was before, Wayne, was by special permit. So that, you know, it was, it was the discretion of the, of the Planning Board. So in fact, we did say no.
That's good.
Certain points. But at least.
Because we need to support our businesses. There's so few. We have such a small business district. And we tend to restrict those folks. And I think we need to be very conscious of that.
I agree. I totally agree. But, you know, some, some properties, like if you looked at the old Hall's Garage, which Pam owned, she had hoped to put residential housing in there, which potentially would have supported the business district, right? And I mean, it's not like anybody's doing anything business-oriented in that part of town anyway. So, I mean, I know Brett Monday has it now, but I don't think he's, he's using it for storage, I think. So potentially that, that property, you know, could have, could have been residential. And I don't think it would have negatively, I think it would have been good for the downtown business district.
Can a piece of it still be that?
No, no, not since the bylaw was changed. The special permit piece of it was removed. And it was just, no, you can't.
Because it's all on the first.
Correct. She wanted to do, you know, yeah.
So maybe it should be a percentage instead of a.
Can I ask you if you could share your very nice report?
Sure, I can.
It was a little hard to absorb it all.
You didn't even get the whole thing.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, I mean, you know, email would be great. Thank you.
Yeah.
My pleasure.
Yeah, send it, send it around to the full board. That'd be great. Thank you, Liz. I appreciate it.
Very nice.
Okay, let's see. Next up, we have, we have the two bylaw proposals from Patrick. And Patrick is here. And before I start, I'm just going to, this is just discussion today. You know, this is a chance for the board to have a discussion about these two proposed bylaws. And then the next meeting will be the public hearing. Okay? So what the process is here is that we are, the Planning Board is making a recommendation to the annual, to the town meeting. So we're only, we're not actually voting, and we're not voting tonight, we're just discussing. But when it comes to the public hearing, we're not actually voting on the actual proposals. We're making a recommendation and we're voting on that. Okay? And that recommendation passes by a simple majority, or fails. So, you know, what we'll do is the Planning Board can issue a report to the town meeting, and that can either be verbal or written. And we can also make amendments. Okay? Is that, I just want to make sure everybody understands the process.
But is this going on the warrant?
Well, what we're doing now is we're having discussion. Next week will be the public hearing.
Right.
And we'll make our recommendation. And then it will go back to the Select Board. And it's up to them.
Sorry.
Oh, I need to do that too. It's up to them to put, put it on the.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Got a bird there?
And then it's, you know, we'll, we'll make our recommendations. And the Select Board can, you know, can do what they want with that. And then it's up to them to, to put it on the town warrant.
So will our recommendation be either for or against what the proposal is?
No.
Or is our, our recommendation going to be formulated somehow? Just be to move it forward, that's all.
Our recommendation is, it's not on the actual proposed bylaws. So we're making a recommendation to the town meeting essentially on. We're making a recommendation and we're only voting on that. Okay? So we're not actually voting on the proposed bylaws.
What's our recommendation?
We haven't gotten there yet.
It's formulated though.
Well, it's going to be a public hearing. So similar to what we do when we have a special permit, we'll have, you know, we'll introduce it and we'll open the public hearing. We'll have questions and comments from anyone who's here. I guess that's probably going to be just Patrick White. And, and then, excuse me. And then once the public hearing is closed, then the Planning Board has discussion. And, and then, you know, we can make recommendations and can make amendments. And then we write up a report for the town meeting. And that can either be verbal or written. And, and that's what we're actually voting on is our recommendation. Okay?
So if we look at this and we want to change it somehow, that would be our recommendation.
Correct.
If we want to say all instead of some, or those kinds of things. We would change it, and that's what we're voting on.
We'll have, you know, after we've heard from the public.
Yeah, right. I mean, our recommendations are just a change or a wording or something.
Exactly.
We need to change and, and not go forward with what they, and the selectmen then look at our recommendation and decide if they want to use it or not.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly.
So, okay.
Yeah.
So this is any changes we want to make in what they've said.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we're considering both of these proposals?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So, yeah, so that's that. So I'll start with the residential inclusionary development. Oh, that's a mouthful. Bylaw. And I'll just open it up for discussion at this point. And.
And the comments here are from?
That's the ADU, Carl. That's the accessory dwelling.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. This is, do you have a copy of the?
I do.
Okay, cool. So does everybody have the residential inclusionary development bylaw in front of them? Wayne, I see you smiling. Do you want to start with any questions?
I don't have one. That's my problem.
You don't have a copy or?
No.
Jennifer has copies. So, so Liz, you know, since you're immersed in this, do you want to sort of start?
Thank you.
I guess the Housing Trust, did they review these or not?
Well, we did, but.
Okay. All right. So Marie, you look like you have.
No, I just. This would be for a new development. Is that correct? This would be if somebody wants to do a development, buy some land, put up houses, nine or more or whatever.
Patrick, do you want to come up, introduce yourself and answer questions from the board? This is your bylaw, right?
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So this is not anything that's already exists.
Right.
This is a new development. And this would be how it's, how it's.
Right.
Developed, a new, this is regulations if we put in a new development somewhere.
So Patrick, can you just introduce yourself?
Yeah, Patrick White. I, I'm on the Select Board.
Thank you.
Yes, so this is largely based on a bylaw of the exact same name that is the town of Lennox has, called the Residential Inclusionary Bylaw.
Right.
And it basically links for what's typically luxury developments. It links a need to participate in helping us fund affordable housing or create affordable housing with a permit to build large-scale developments.
So we have nothing on the books now that.
Nothing on the books now.
This is a whole new development.
So let's say, for example, that Wheatley gets sold. And they say on the Wheatley campus, it's cottage era and we want to maintain the beautiful yellow brick house. And we also want that 30 units. They would then have to either make three of those units affordable, which is unlikely, or they would pay a certain amount to be negotiated into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Don't we have that now?
No. Lennox has it. Many towns have it. We don't have it. This is us, another one of these model kind of standard bylaws. We just didn't, never did it. Now, it's possible that a Select Board could negotiate participation.
Yeah, I know all that. I was just wondering.
But it's not required, you know? And, and in fact, when we permitted them for it, we made note such requirement. So this would add a requirement that folks are going to have to help us. And, you know, and, and to bring the point to bear, one of the meetings that I think Kate and Liz were talking about was, was what we do with Pinewood. And we're looking at a need of $3 to $5 million to repair it. Okay? And, and it may be that we can come pull a rabbit out of the hat and get some state money or move it somewhere else because it's, you know, because the wetness is what's helping kind of degrade it. But the fact of the matter is, we're talking about a really significant need to invest. And this is a bylaw that helps ensure that it's not just, you know, taxpayer general fund money that goes to challenges like that. You know, this is, I think that we are years, if ever, away from, you know, having this grand expansion. I think we're looking at some serious issues. You know, you've got at least $500,000 to $1 million in capital needs at Eaton Court. You've got a question of, of a desire to create some market units up there. And you've got millions of dollars investment at Pinewood, and this would just help to fund that. So somebody wants to build 20 units, so you got to either make two units affordable or more likely come up with a number that the town everybody's to, you know, pay into this.
Would you, would you base that, would you suggest? I mean, I know that the basic number for one unit is $500,000 to build a unit. So when we're asking them to fund, you know, if they build between 10 and 19 units, then they would either have one, you know, one affordable housing unit or pay into that. Would you, would you suggest that we take, ask for $500,000 to do that?
I think that, I think that the, in Lennox, the way that it works is that they negotiated a fee that gets paid in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And I think it's only $250,000. But they, per unit, per, per, per unit that they need to do. Now, obviously, the way this is written, I got to let you know, I think that one might interpret this as saying if it's 10, $1.5 million units, you got to pay 1.5 million in. I'm not sure that's fair to add 10% of the cost. Then again, if it's 19 units, it'd be about 5% of the cost. So I think one of the things that this body should do, I don't want to be resumptuous and tell you, but figuring out a more defined formula of what seems fair. You know, so, you know, at 10 units, maybe paying the whole retail price of the unit isn't fair, but maybe the construction cost is fair. Or maybe having a cap of this paid in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund of X amount of dollars adjusted for inflation because 20 years from now, that'll be fewer dollars than it is today. Those are all really legitimate questions of how to structure this. And I have frankly no strong opinion on it. I think that, I think the idea here is to, to contribute to what, what is a bit of a housing challenge that we have here, but not so much that we are going to unfairly burden those future home buyers who, who would have to basically make up for in their own purchase price, you know? So, there you go.
So I guess I have a question on, on section, we're the section under minimum requirements for inclusionary development. Yep.
Yeah.
This section, isn't it?
1.15.
1.15.
Minimum requirements for inclusionary development. Under two, each inclusionary development shall provide at the applicant's choice one of the following. Construct or rehabilitate affordable units comparable in appearance and setting to the rest of the development or neighborhood. You know, just thinking about where we are today with Pinewood and, you know, clearly the quality of the construction and associated costs. Appearance and setting seems like it's not addressing actual construction quality.
No, this would be on their own property. So this would be if they opted to take the two units of Wheatley and make them affordable units. This has nothing to do with Pinewood.
I know this has nothing to do with Pinewood. My question is, you know, the wording is addressing appearance and setting, but it's, to me, that looks like it's not addressing. Say you have 10 units on a property and, you know, you've got one affordable unit. Okay, so the wording here asks that appearance and setting be comparable to the rest of the development. It does not, it does not address the quality of the construction. That's just a comment I'm making here for you. Something that I would.
This is directly on the Lennox bylaw, and I assume it was vetted. But I think it's a really reasonable, legitimate question.
So you're just making, you know, you're.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Would you expect something like that to be comparable construction in a luxury development, to have the affordable unit be just as nice as the others?
I would.
Add the word quality. It's comparable quality, setting.
And quality.
Appearance and quality.
I would think they would want it too, otherwise it's going to deteriorate quicker.
Yeah.
I guess. But I just think it's.
So Wayne, is you, let me, so is your concern that, that this brings down the overall quality of what you would get in an overall development? Is that what?
No, I'm saying that I don't think it's reasonable to put folks that may be on, you know, lesser incomes or whatever you want to call it, into a luxury development and expect. lesser incomes or whatever you want to call it into a luxury development and expect that that's, you know, I, I just don't see that. If you have a million and a half dollar unit, that's where you're going to put your folks that need help? I'm sorry, I just don't see it being reality.
They're not going to do it.
They're not going to do it. And, and so I just don't think that that requirement. And I think too, when you, this is a perfect negotiation to have with anybody that may want to come in and do something. That's where you come in and, and you have the, that discussion that says, you know what? We have property that we've identified, somebody's donated it. We want you, while you're here with your crew, to build it. Now, maybe there's some cost involved, but your crews are going to be here. This is going to be the way we want to.
All right.
I, I just think stuff like that is a lot more creative than trying to force this into a development that maybe it's not the case.
I think Patrick's right. The reality is that, um, I mean, I think if it was sort of, you know, it depends on the level. I mean, you guys have been researching this, but it, I'm guessing it's going to depend on the level of the development. So to me, if it's sort of a middle income development, I think it's reasonable that the construction quality be the same. And I can't imagine it would be, I mean, I don't know. Do you guys, would the difference be that significant?
I would think as, if I was a developer, that I would, if I was building something really nice, that I would not put something that was not so nice next to it. It, one, it devalues the neighborhood. So it doesn't make sense.
Okay. But then also, I think it, Patrick's right, that they're not going to do it. They're going to pay into the housing.
Right, which is fine. Right.
So we don't need a requirement like that.
So where does the money, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, what did you?
No, I'm just saying, so to put a requirement on there that the building quality be the same, I don't know, I think that's, gets a little muddy.
I think it's helpful to sort of think about where the market is in reality right now. So first of all, in Stockbridge, you can't, you can't do cluster housing absent a cottage era property. And so, so let's do it.
See our subdivision, are you, have you looked at our subdivision bylaw?
No, I'm saying you can't do, with a small parcel. So you could do on, on Wheatley, you could consider, consider doing more density because it's a special permit in cottage era. But generally speaking, if you're building pure housing, since it's nothing to do with hotels, if you're building pure housing, you gotta have the minimum of a half acre in some zones, up to four acres in other zones. So you're, you know, construction is running, what, four or 500 bucks a foot around here? More? All right? So that means to build a 200, 2,000 square foot house is close to $1 million. Nobody's building modest scale stuff from scratch right now. The only chance we have is to renovate existing housing stock if you want to have anything that regular people, for lack of a better term, can afford. So when you're, when you're spending a million bucks a unit to build the unit, it's going to be a luxury unit. All right? So I think that, I think that, that realistically, if you're also spending a million bucks, million and a half bucks, pricing at a million and a half bucks a unit, and you got room to put two more units, and we give you a way to not make those two units affordable by paid into this thing over here, it's really likely that there's, if they got the room for two more units, that they're going to basically say, yeah, where do I write the check?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I guess it's probably difficult to, yeah, you know, that is the market in Stockbridge. So, yeah. Okay.
Will allow a development to be.
Well, even with the subdivision, they want to build 30 homes. They still would have to participate, you know? They got to be.
Does anyone else have any? Um, yeah, then I had a question about, um.
Just full disclosure, I'm sorry.
About, I'm sorry?
I said full disclosure. The other thing I think you should weigh in on is, uh, and you can accuse me of being a liberal on this one. The Lenox bylaw starts at 15. I wrote this one to start at 10. So Lenox's bylaw goes, starts at 15, and then it's basically, I think it was 15, 30, and then every 10. And I did 10, 10, and every 10. And he's also a reasonable question for the town to think whether 10 is too aggressive. I didn't think so. Um, and, uh, and, but, uh, but, you know, the fact of the matter is that, you know, you guys also should, could reasonably weigh in on the amount of units, you know, what the ratio is. So is it one out of every 10 or one out of every 15 or somewhere in between? That is a change I made to the Lenox bylaw and rather than anyone think I slipped it in, I figured full disclosure.
Okay, thank you.
But our property is a lot more expensive than property in Lenox. So, you know, that might be a justification because, you know, we're looking at, like we just talked about, a million and a half dollars a unit. It's, you know, that's a 2,000 square foot unit. It's a lot smaller than what some people are building today, you know?
So, you know, that's something to think about for, for this public hearing.
Okay.
I mean, you know, the thing that kind of puzzled me most, and maybe I'm misreading it, but is this total development unit count? You know, I mean, 10 to 19 units, 20 to 29 units, 30 units and up. I mean, is anything like that happening?
Who knows?
Who knows? I mean.
In R2, you have a 20 acre lot and there's lots of them around here. You could build 10 units in 20 acres with a little bit overhead for, you know, roads and, you know, whatever else the public space, but, you know, I mean, it's possible. And if the group want to do that.
I mean Elm Court?
Yeah. Elm Court, exactly.
Right. So, okay, so my next question has to do with, uh, is section, um, 1.1.5, um, number three? Oh, yeah, it's 1.1.6.
Okay.
Dimensional requirements. Thank you.
Kate, this is in addition to all other bylaw requirements for the town of Stockbridge.
I understand.
Yeah.
I understand. But it's, it says here on, under number three, that, um, street line and lot line setbacks minimum, lot size minimum, frontage of the proposed inclusionary development will be determined through the special permit process outlined in section 1.1.6.1. And then at least 50% of the lot line setback shall be maintained. Why, I mean, why just 50% of the lot line? Is that from Lenox?
Number three. Yeah, that's from Lenox. So if you want to strike that, you guys, that this part of it is really something you guys should dive into. Because, uh, yeah.
Okay. So wouldn't that be, I mean, what's we already have? I would say that we should be just maintaining the lot line. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think I understand.
And then.
Take it out altogether, because we have other bylaws that deal with all of those issues. Why are we, why are we doing them again?
Take it out. Take it out. Yeah, thank you. And then, um, this is just, I don't know, I just, this doesn't really, I'm just curious. Under 1.1.13, maximum incomes and selling prices, initial sale, where you out, where it's outlined how, um, you know, applicants' taxes are, are submitted for review to either the local housing trust, the housing authority, or other agencies established by the town. What might that other agency be?
Are you talking about what, number two?
Number one.
I think they, you have to make sure that they don't sell it to their, you know, uh.
No, I understand. My question is, is what you say, housing authority or other agency is established by the town? I'm asking you what that other agency.
I mean, we have the Stockbridge Housing Authority that does, uh, the section eights. We've got the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that maybe, uh, maybe.
So they list those, they list those two things and this says other agency? And the reason I ask is because I know that I have heard people say they're not comfortable with the idea of submitting their taxes in a small town.
Purchase a house, they have to submit their taxes.
Everybody does. I'm just saying, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, no, I think, I, I mean, there's all sorts of legal.
Just a question for you, I'm asking you, when you, where it says other agency is established by the town, what other agency would that potentially be?
Uh, I can't imagine one. Take it out.
All right.
1.1.13, she's talking about.
I mean, I think that's worth looking into.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything else, but yeah.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think, uh, I think for, uh, for lots of things, there's, um, there are, you know, we don't get a lot of applicants for some of the tax relief measures we have. And some people think that's because you have to submit lots of documentation. In this one though, if you're getting an affordable house, uh, you know, you're, it's, it's all.
Right. It doesn't construct, do the one for Pinewood's? Don't they look at the, they're the ones who look at the income?
Yeah, sure. Stockbridge Housing Authority does it for Eaton Court. And, uh, but if we had Habitat for Humanity, for example, was building units, they might be the one that we designate. So I'm not sure you want to, I don't know.
Why don't you look into who that might be?
Yeah.
And, you know, if you feel that there are, you know, use your judgment. But that was just something that I was curious.
Can you put it in the recommendations, just so we remember?
So, and that's in paragraph.
It's not really, I don't think it rises to that level.
Okay.
Well, just, it's going to be a list.
If you can just, you know, find out what that might be before the.
I don't know of anything right now from my head.
Well, we have some time before the public hearing. So can you look into that, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
So it says purchase affordable housing units. Are they buying their apartment for their?
Yeah, these are, this is only for units for sale. This isn't like for a rental development.
So they could buy?
Yes, someone built.
These are all individual houses?
Someone built 19 years.
It's an individual.
Right.
Not an apartment.
Right.
Or at least, yeah.
I missed that, I'm sorry. I was reading and then I missed the conversation. I'm sorry.
Okay. Any other questions?
Have they put this into practice in Lenox?
I, I heard.
Yeah, I didn't hear the answer.
Yeah, they've, they've done it in Lenox, so they, they got.
I, I've heard that they've only had like five applications in the last five years.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
So where have they put it into practice?
Uh, you have to ask the zoning board. This is all managed by the zoning board, appeals, I have no idea. I just know that they've done several developments which resulted in, uh, payments into the Affordable Housing Trust that, uh, that Mary Beth Miss referenced when she came and talked to us.
So payments into the housing trust that they were used for housing?
Yeah, they, I think that they use it to finance those properties just off of Stonic Street.
Right, there were some properties that they rehabbed.
Yeah.
And then, um, they underwrote part of it so that they could be affordable. So there was money used by the town to underwrite it. So that's.
And they, and they, did they get takers for that? They did?
Right, lottery.
Okay. Okay, so both those.
I mean, they had units that sold for $280,000. They definitely had takers.
Well, I just.
In Lenox.
I have a sort of a, my memory might be wrong, but I thought there was an article in The Eagle where they actually didn't have a lot of response. Does that sound right?
I'm not sure that was the one in Lenox. That might have been in a different town.
That was Lenox.
Well, they did find a.
Like yesterday's paper that I read?
Sorry?
Like yesterday's paper that I was reading? Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. All right.
One of the problems is, is the price goes up because you can only go 80, 80%. This is what Smithy was talking about the other day, is, uh, because our AMI in South County is really much higher than it is countywide, the 80% of AMI, if it was just built, built based on Lenox South, might be 60 grand. But because it's based on the whole county, 80% of 60 grand for the whole county is only 48,000. And so as you have to afford a mortgage with, on $48,000 a year, if the, if the thing costs even $300,000, $400,000, that may be more than you can afford for your mortgage on. And so, you know, in Lenox, they've done things like they do down payment assistance to help them put the money together. And they try to keep the unit cost down under 300,000 and, you know, but, but even a, even a Habitat for Humanity home often goes for $400,000. It's really tricky to find enough applicants who thread the needle between making little enough to be able to get in, but enough to really afford it. To be able to afford it.
And then taxes on top, which are at least 10 or 11%.
Right. And these are, yeah, and I think that's one of the, one of the things about affordable housing that people don't understand. It's not like housing for people without incomes. These are people who might work as like a health aide or, or teacher's assistant or something like that, you know, an EMS. You know, if you're, if you're not a fire chief, fire chief here makes 65 grand. And Lee, the EMS is, only make $44,000. So somebody like that would actually fit into this. But there's very, you know, it's like kind of a narrow band of people, you know, who qualify.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so we're on to, um, accessory dwelling units. And I'm just going, going to recap, because we had looked at this in the fall. And, um, within the context of the existing wording that we have on, in our zoning bylaw. And, um, I brought up the idea of just moving the date forward. And, um, there didn't seem to really be consensus or interest in that idea. You know, moving the date forward, forward would just sort of open up more properties where this would be allowed. Currently, the date's at 1990. Does everyone understand that, how that works? Yeah. So, um, so, and then we had input from Ned, which was that, um, in Egremont, where he is also the building inspector, um, this had really just become a way for people with the money to do it, to make their properties, um, larger. So, you know, that's where we were at. And, um, Patrick has, um, taken, you know, taken this and, you know, it's based on the model bylaw from the state, so I assume that means that it would pass the county's general without any issues because it's state model, correct?
That's my understanding, Ned.
Yep. Now, and I compliment you on your work, by the way. You know, these are just questions that, you know, I want to understand it and make sure people have a chance to ask questions. So, so this has, you know, so has everybody reviewed this carefully? It has, you know, two components. There's, um, one part of it is for attached, it becomes a byright. And then for, um, for detached, or it says here, attached or detached, special permit. Okay, within a home, it's a byright. And for attached or detached, it's a, it's a special permit.
And here my question again is, um, the comments are, um, from whom and?
So the comments are, that's from the model bylaw.
I see.
Yep. And, um, you know, so that's, that's.
Oh, this is part of the, okay, I see.
Yeah, that's just putting it together.
So I actually have a lot of questions on this one, but I don't want to, does anybody else? I want to make sure you all have a chance to ask questions.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, okay. All right, so we've been, um, recently, as you know, we talked about, um, I, I, I'd like to better understand how this would interact with a large scale development. So recently, we had White Pines came before us, um, looking to expand their footprint with the decks. And, you know, depending on how that was done, potentially that became a bigger footprint. So can you tell me how this would interact with?
It buys us condos, so you wouldn't be able to apply this to condos. Can't put an accessory dwelling in a condo.
You wouldn't be able to.
That's my understanding. I mean, I never thought of it. In the case of White Pines, uh, you know, there's, there, there's also restrictions in the original special permit, it's the number of units they can have. So I don't think you could add accessory structures without renegotiating the special permit. I don't know that. I honestly don't. That's a better question for Donna.
I think you should know. You know, this is your bylaw, right?
This is your question.
Okay, buddy. You, you got access to town council, so you asked Donna. My bylaw is based on the model bylaw.
The bylaw that you're submitting, that the select board is, that you wrote, and that the select board reviewed and approved, and I think you should take some.
I'm happy to answer questions, but if this is gonna turn into like, gotcha questions, Kate.
It's not gotcha questions.
I'll let you guys talk amongst yourselves, and you can refer questions back to the select board. I'm happy to have a reasonable conversation on this. I don't know how we'd apply it on White Pines because it's condos. Do we have, can you do accessory dwelling units in condos? I don't think so.
Doesn't it say?
It said single family.
I think it's a single family.
It does, dwelling, single family home, building design.
And we can get Donna in here for another meeting if you want, and let her, let the lawyers answer questions. How could I possibly know?
I mean, it says, single family home or parcel.
Okay, well, I was under the understanding that this was something we had worked on with the housing trust, but we will, we'll look into that. Can I also have a, I have an email from, from someone named Leif Steiner. And his question has to do with how ADUs would interact with condos as well. So.
No, he was worried about it could be, be, be getting around the restriction by converting to condos. And I think he's got a legitimate question, which I've already posted, Donna. I haven't got an answer yet.
Okay, can you let us know what you get back on that one? Okay, thank you. All right, so another question I had was, we've been talking about scale and density in the LPOD, and setbacks and so on. And I'm just wondering how this, it seems like this would be, certainly be doable in the LPOD. Is that something that you thought about?
Frankly, I think there's very few resident, residential homes that are full-time residents. So this is all that this applies to. This only applies to full-time homes for the simple reason that if you take a rental property that somebody buys, and you double the amount of units that they have on it, you basically have significantly increased, maybe doubled, the cash flow associated to it for short-term rentals. So the only way this works, and I know some people aren't gonna like it, because I already read, I saw Patty, I know Patty wrote today on this, that some people feel it's making second homeowners second-class citizens. I firmly dispute that, and I want people to understand that, that if we're gonna do this, we're gonna do it so that residential ownership is more affordable, or that seniors can downsize. But it cannot be available.
Excuse me, excuse me. The question is not about, that's not my question. My question has to do with density in the LPOD. It doesn't have to do with part-time or full-time residents and what they can or cannot do based on.
Okay, but in the LPOD, how many, how many full-time residents live in there?
There are full-time, I think there are full-time residents.
There's very few.
There are some.
Would you still dictate what happens in the LPOD with what we have currently? You wouldn't be able to expand into the LPOD.
There's some large lots, so, you know, you.
It's also a special permit by this board. Unless it's already existing in your building, in the existing house, your board would need to approve it. And if it's in the LPOD, you don't want to approve it. It takes five votes to approve a special permit.
My question is, so in terms of the setbacks, do the existing bylaw setbacks still apply?
Yeah.
So it does. Didn't I say?
Yes.
You're saying, yeah, I would think, or you, yes or no? I mean.
Kate, I don't, I'm not, these are good questions for you to pose to Donna. I don't see any reason, though, why this is, this is an accessory dwelling unit. And I think that all, you'd have to, you know, the same way that if someone wants to do a deck, we had one the other time, recently, where it was, it was within the 50-foot setback, and he couldn't do it. And, and, and had to bring it into conformance. I think that all those rules still apply. I believe, yeah.
Okay, you're just not, all right, I'll check with Donna.
It does say that it has to be within, you know, the local bylaws and ordinances and regulations. Under G, 2G.
5.0.2.
That means.
I know, I think that, you know, I did see that, and I guess my comment is that I think it should be clarified in the wording, so that, because there's other wording here that says, as an example, you know, we've also got the table of dimensions, which speaks to. Okay, so it, it sounds like, you know, this is, this is, I think I thought you were a little more immersed in it than, than is actually the case. So it sounds like you've drafted this, and you would like us to tend to some of these details. Am I, is that correct?
I think that this is ready to go. I think, I think, but on the caveat that this is one person's take on the model bylaw, which poses about 15 questions. And if you want to dive into those 15 questions, it's absolutely right. And I guarantee you that the board that will review your recommendations will take them seriously and, 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 defers too strong a word, but, but really accommodate reasonable requests. I think this is something where to make it byright, I'm sorry, to make it majority pass, it has to be a byright option, or it's a two-thirds zoning pass, you know, with the, with the changes that Baker made. So the byright option here is if you got a 5,000-square-foot house, and you want to put in a separate door, and do an apartment on the first floor, and then rent the rest of the house out, you can do that byright, you know, something like that. The rest of it is still subject to the special permit process. And I think that, and it's also not our, us, the select board, the special permit. That gives the planning board a whole lot of discretion over whether or not it changes the character of the neighborhood, it impacts the neighbors, it's too much for the LPOD. Any of these questions are legitimate questions for your special permit process. And, and I think that that's, you know, that's where I was coming from.
So, so if it's a byright scenario, does, does the maximum lot coverage, does that still apply?
The byright's only if it's inside, inside the existing.
Existing.
Dwelling unit.
Okay.
Existing, single-family home. So, and we all, and frankly, we all know folks who have done this. I mean, a lot of people have put in sort of like granny spaces, kind of, maybe not legally, whatever. This would kind of give people some guidance as to what is allowed within the town, you know, and, and just going forward. I would hope, I think.
And to meet codes.
For the, the folks who have already done this, and yeah, there are quite a few around town, if they are meeting the current wording that we have on the books, are they grandfathered in? How does that work?
I think this is only for new permits, that's my understanding. But I don't believe that you, you know, if, I think that there's, there's facts on the ground, as they say, and if someone's, I don't.
It may come, it may come up when a house is sold.
Right.
Because if it's not permanent for that, then that's gonna come up, and either you get the permit, or you're told, no, you can't do that, and you have to take that extra.
If you apply for building permit, and the, and the, you know, the building inspector goes in and goes, oh, you know.
Right.
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
But let's also recognize that somebody can just avoid putting a kitchen in, avoid putting in, in like a kitchen appliance in some cases, and they can effectively create an ADU by just renovating their home. You know, and this basically gives them, rather than, you know, this, this allows folks, you know, to have a smaller unit as part of a big house. I think that's not a bad thing.
I don't either. I mean, I think, given the fact that our median age is 65, and that people's income is not going up at this point, you're on a fixed income, or maybe you're not getting enough social security, which I certainly won't. I look at it, and I go, there's no way. I mean, absolutely no way. This is a way to kind of keep our town together, and to actually say to our townspeople, you matter. You know, we want you to stay here. We want you to be able to do something to be able to do that. That's my feeling about it.
Okay. All right, I think I'm more, you know, I'm just trying to understand how this, you know, because we've been talking about scale, and I think my concern is more, so for, for, within the home, it's an existing, but you haven't set a date to it, so they could expand an existing home, right?
I mean, I think we've got, we've got the 10% footprint rule and the 20% lot rule.
And that's.
If they meet that rule.
Okay.
Then there's room to expand, but often if it's in the LPOD or somewhere else, it's still a special permit, as you all know. You know, if, if somebody's like, if it were, you know, even somebody like me. I mean, I'm in R4, and I got 3.1 acres. If I wanted to expand that house, it's a special permit, right?
Yeah.
You know, so, so, you know, and because anything external to the house is a special permit, I think that's personally really important, because neighbors may have concerns, you may have coverage concern, you may have density concerns, all the things you're saying. And that puts, that requires five votes of this board to pass. You know, I think that's a pretty high bar to make sure that it doesn't get abused, you know?
I have my doubts. The special permits tend to, we don't tend to turn them down.
Yeah.
So, and I, you know, and that's not a criticism. That's just, that's the reality. If you look back, you know, over time, they don't get, tend to get turned down, so.
They can be modified, though.
Yeah, we do have modified them.
We can do anything.
Conditions.
You know, as Donna explained, you know, we can, it's, special permit involves a lot of discretion.
I know one resident who lives on Lakeville, and, and this couple, when they renovated their house 25 years ago, they wanted to put an apartment above the garage for their kids to visit, all right? And our building inspector said, no, I cannot permit this. And they actually thought he was being mean, or he didn't like them, or something crazy. Not, not crazy, I don't mean that in a bad way. I just mean, they thought it was personal. And the reality was that we had no way to legally permit a separate unit above the garage. And this, so it's dead space above the garage, you know, and, and I think that this is a good example of, you know, that couple could be, you know, they're older now. They could be living in the unit above the garage. You know, and, and the kids could be raised in a family in the larger unit, you know? That's kind of what this is meant to be.
Was their house, how, I mean, because we actually do have wording for that, so I'm sort of a little bit confused. Was their house?
The accessory unit wasn't before 1990. They were adding.
It was after 1990?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I see. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
I like that this proposed bylaw is based on the state.
The model.
Model. State did.
The only reason some like me can produce it. I mean, come on.
I really like, I really like the state model. I thought that was pretty good.
I just wish it were less than eight pages long. I'm sorry.
I mean, I.
Is it that long?
It's only.
Yours is only.
Oh, mine is four. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Three pages.
So, I mean, it's, you know, one, another concern I have, and I just, I'm just asking if this is something you've thought about, because I noticed it is a change from the state, state template. Is, I mean, in several areas in this state template, you know, they, they make the point that, that accessory dwelling units are meant to be subordinate to the main property. But then, under use and dimensional regulations, you've got that, the change, which I assume is yours, but correct me if I'm wrong, you've got the gross floor area of an accessory dwelling unit, including any additions, shall not be greater than 900 square feet, or half the floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is smaller. So I just, you know, one comment I have is that, and this is actually a comment that this fellow made as well, is that, you know, the idea of making, in our existing wording, it approaches it using scale. So it's like 20% of the current. And again, this is just a comment. I mean, I would, I would like, I think I would value something that ensures that, sort of, that the dwelling unit is subordinate visually to the main, main structure.
Well, the byright option has to be in an existing house already. So whether or not it's, if it's a 5,000-square-foot house, and they can carve up to 900 square feet out and put a kitchen in, I don't think that that's gonna really change the scale of that. On the other side, it's a special permit, so the maximum they can do is 900. But you don't have to permit 900. You could only permit 600. Or that's up to your board. You know, and all, and all the special permit stuff, you get to decide. And, and I think that, the other thing is that, that the model bylaw was written in 2017. In 2020, the governor passed a, a housing law that allowed these types of zoning bylaws to pass byright. And it includes a whole bunch of provisions in it that have to be included in order for it to be able to, not by right, I mean by a simple majority. All right, I'm getting tired, sorry. So, so it would help for you to familiarize yourself with what the 2020 law requirements are around, around the Governor Baker's requirements for simple majority, because those were not reflected in the 2017 draft, and I added some of those in so it could pass by a simple majority. So there's two parts of this that were kind of merged together.
But wouldn't your concern, Kate, be handled by worry about the dwelling unit being larger simply by a smaller house and its scope? You have to take the smaller. So it's no more than 900, but if you have a small house and you want to do.
It's either half or 900, whichever is smaller.
Whichever's smaller, so you can't just take the 900. So you, it's, it's taking care of itself by the size of the house. You're never gonna have it bigger than the original.
Isn't it covered in the two definitions where, you know, it says, you know, that, that it is clearly a subordinate part of the single-family dwelling, and complies with each of the criteria stated below? Building attached, attached. I mean, I don't know, I think.
I just, I just, you know, half the floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is smaller, I guess, I just feel like half is, is not subordinate. That's all, you know? So, but, you know, this is a, this is a, something we'll, you know, decide on at the, the public hearing. After the, after the, we close the public hearing and make our, our recommendations and comments. Okay? Anything else?
I'm sorry, are you gonna be taking comments from the Zoom?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Peter Angaro, a part-time resident in Mackinac Heights. I actually had three questions that I would be interested in the board considering when they go into discussion for next week. One is specifically around Section 4, Item 5, talking about what happens when a previously permitted accessory dwelling unit that's been constructed by a full-time resident gets sold, and if that buyer would happen to be a part-time resident, I'd be interested in what would happen in that scenario. That's one. The second item is just a thought around why we're confusing the zoning and construction and rights around property with the operation and control of short-term rentals. I think those are two separate issues. I think property owners should be treated equally. And I think this is a, an issue that Patrick referred to earlier, and I think there's probably many people that believe that's the case. And my third item is, while this is based on the model bylaw, I find it very interesting that there's a specific definition for private, for primary residence in the bylaw. And yet, the term "and domicile" has been added three times to the proposed bylaw. And I think there's probably a very specific reason for that, but the board should probably consider why that is. Thank you.
Do you have any, thank you. Do you have any comments on that?
Primary residents and domicile are synonyms.
I'm sorry, can you speak a little?
Primary residents and domicile are synonyms. There was some confusion in the definitions I, that I found, where, where it talks about primary residence is a building in which is conducted the principal use of the lot on which is located. For residential zone units, such a building would be a dwelling. But in our parlance, especially around here, because of some of the debates we've had in the past year, primary residence is your domicile. It's a place where you are registered to vote and live six months and a day or longer. So I wanted to clarify, because I didn't want people to be confused that the point, parts where I meant primary residence, as in the place you vote, is not what the definition of the model bylaw was. So, and I, and I, and I'll be very candid on this. The, the goal here is not, the goal here is, is to preserve housing stock, not to further erode it. And I think that we have the same issues for whether you're, whether you're a seasonal homeowner, or a prior, or a, or a residential homeowner, a full-time homeowner, which is that you, you take two short-term rental-style rental units, and you put them on one parcel, and you are going to accelerate the conversion of homeownership for people to live in, whether they live at part-time or full-time, into like, turning them into investor, investor-owned units that have doubled their cash flow, and without doubling the purchase price. And that will accelerate, you know, Michael Canales and I did a demo with Granicus. Liz, you ran it too, about two weeks ago, all right? And I did the same. Granicus is a company that manages short-term rentals.
Did you get that data on, on short-term rentals that I asked for?
I did. Well, I, which data? I mean, I got some data.
I wanted to know how many of them have actually registered with the town.
Oh, yeah, I know, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can you send that information? Can you send that information?
Uh-huh. And I think the number's 12, all right?
This might have been 10.
10.
Out of how many?
Uh, well, that's the point I was going to make, is when I got this demo from Granicus, this is a company that helps towns manage short-term rentals. When I got it two years ago, they had 90 in July. It's a real-time snapshot. They won't give you all the data because it's, you got to pay for it, right? The real-time snapshot in February was what, 133? 33. And in July, they estimated that it was probably 25 to 50% more. So in two years, even if it's the same in February to July, it's gone up 50%. And in, if we were to do a snapshot from July to July, it might have actually gone up by 100% and only 10 of them are registered with the town. And worse yet, from a tax perspective, the state only has 90 on file as having collected taxes and remitted them to the town. So everybody who's doing it fair, if they're basically, you know, spending the month of August in their home, but they're renting their home out, you know, in June and July to afford it, those people are paying their taxes to the town and half of them aren't even doing that.
Well, there are also, there's also a lot that are unaccounted for because there are lots, there are people who do this privately. So they're not doing it on VRBO and Airbnb and the places where you see them, which is where they get their numbers.
Right. And so, and so I, I think, I think to answer Peter's question, the third question anyway, I think it's a reasonable issue, but I will withdraw my support from this bylaw if we make it so that everybody can, can have two rental units at one time on one property. Because if you do that, you're going to further make it harder for, for.
I agree.
Folks to afford to live here.
I agree with you.
So, you know, I just to be candid, I.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah, but he had two other questions that we didn't address.
Um, what was this? What was this?
No, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry. I just want to jump in. I wasn't looking for answers to my questions. I was just pointing out items that should probably be considered before the next public meeting. So they were, again, confusing the management and control of short-term rentals with zoning bylaws for people who are, have property rights. And I'm very concerned that everything that was just discussed in the last five minutes is about controlling short-term rentals. It has, it, it, it is a problem that we have regardless of the ability to build an ADU. So we can talk about the merits of how we should handle short-term rentals in this town, or we can talk about how we treat people that own property in this town, but I don't know why we're talking about them at the same time. That's one of my questions. And again, I'm not expecting an answer. The second, the, the first question I asked was about specifically section four, item five. And what happens when it says that the permit will expire if a home that was previously permitted with an ADU is sold and the person does not become a full-time resident of the, uh, excuse me, does not domicile themselves, which I can, I'm going to disagree with Patrick's comment about this, that primary residence and domicile in terms of the definition here are the same. But we'll, we'll use his term to mean someone who's a full-time resident. What happens if the person purchasing that home is not a full-time resident?
That's number five, right?
Item five, section four.
You can get an occupancy permit for the second unit, is what the answer is.
So it just lays fallow? They can't use it?
It can turn into a rec room, I guess. I don't know. I'm saying you can't use two units because you can't rent two units on one parcel, or this all, or this blows up the housing market.
Okay, so, and who is going to control that, police that, make sure that that happens?
Right.
We have a building inspector. I mean, it's a job.
Patty is asking. We have another question.
Patty, thank you. Thanks, Marie. Patty?
Yeah, I guess I'm really confused that the assumption is that.
I'm sorry, your, your full name for, for viewers, Patty Caya?
Oh, yes. Sorry about that. Patty Caya, um, Mackinac Heights also. Um, I guess I'm really confused. The assumption is that if a part-time resident that purchased the property, they would be renting most of the units, rather than the part-time resident buys the property and rents out the ADU. Maybe to a town person who lives in the town and rents it out as an apartment. Like, why is the assumption that you're going to rent it out as both short-term rentals? If you had adequate rules around the short-term rentals, you wouldn't have to assume that. But because you're not actually regulating the commercialization of the short-term rentals, you're then just penalizing who can build an ADU. It relates to what Peter just said.
Yeah.
It's just a curious question. The assumption is that a part-time resident cannot build an ADU for the good of the town. Only a full-time resident can. I just find that an interesting question.
The, I think that one way to think about it, Patty, is there's, the, the question isn't whether or not a, a part-time resident would build an, or build and rent a single unit as an ADU. The question is whether an, an absentee investor will buy out houses for an ADU and rent two units at once. So we can, we, we can, we can, by, by creating a, a residential, full-time residential housing requirement, as some towns have done, by the way, around our short-term rentals. And Roxanne and I wrote ours, we didn't limit it. We could have, but we didn't. But by, by, by limiting it to full-time residents, we limit the ability for two units to be made for rent at one time, which I think erodes the housing market. It doesn't sound like a short-term, uh, uh, second homeowner, part-time resident, from renting their unit out while they're not there. We specifically allowed that, you know? And, and, and because a lot of folks, that, that helps them afford their second home, you know? But, but I, I just can't, in good conscience, where we've got somewhere between, you know, less than 1,000, we'll say that, I have that argument, somewhere, less than 1,000 full-time residences left here, we can't in good conscience actually create policies that might accelerate, you know, the conversion of, of the housing stock into, into investor properties.
Well, I think that short-term rental has done that.
Yeah.
By not, you know, closing that loophole.
Loose loophole.
That doesn't require residential.
Oh, that's a policy question that could easily be posed to the town, but.
I mean, I think, you know, among for what people I've spoken with who, you know, in the planning field, the missing middle housing is going because if you don't require that short-term rental properties be residential, full-time ownership. So I hope that that is something I'm asking you.
Well, that's, I think, that's a zoning issue, and I would say that you're not going to punt it anywhere to this board. But I think that the politics of, you think that suggesting that we raise taxes that create an uneven tax policy was controversial last year, you start telling folks who've been affording their house as part-time residents that we're not going to let you do that anymore. We're going to limit it to the full-time residents, and you will see a firestorm of, of, of complaint on that because some people have made decisions. Now, maybe you could grandfather those, but if you do that, then, you know, that's just another strategy to, there's a lot of policy issues here, but also a lot of political issues. And I got to say, uh, that, that I know a lot of folks.
You've had your fun for the year.
Yeah. Someone else can, someone else can carry that, carry that flag forward. This guy's still pulling the arrows out.
All right. Well, I think the purpose and intent is, is pretty upfront here. And it's, it says, provide residential homeowners with the means of obtaining rental income, companionship, security, and services, thereby enabling them to stay more comfortably in homes and neighborhoods they might otherwise be forced to leave. And that's sort of the top of the marquee there. So I, I, I feel that's clear. You know, and I, I do thank you, Patrick. I think you've done a great job with this.
First draft.
Um, I just, you know, there, these are just questions that I, I go through it and I just sort of want to, um, you know, think it through and be as careful as possible because this town, my, just my opinion, just speaking for myself, the six, a lot of the success has to do with, um, Carl, you can speak to this too, scale and.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and then that idea of, of smart, you know, with that sort of green emerald necklace around the outskirts and managing that, um, you know, the character of the town and the aesthetics. I do think that's important. So that's why, you know, I hope you don't feel that I've been.
No, not at all.
Okay. All right, good.
I also would like to ask the, the opinion, I'd be happy to not attend the public hearings on both of these. I really think I kind of had my say in drafting the first draft. And I really would appreciate it if you all would take the lead on the public hearings. Now, you kind of hear it tonight where I was coming from, for enough for me, all right? I think that it would be great if you guys now managed a public hearing, collect all the input, send us a set of recommendations. Uh, you'll have 21 days afterwards. And, um, and then, you know, and then, uh, then, you know, Chuck and Jamie and I will take it up and come up with the final draft.
It's whatever you're comfortable with.
Patrick, you've been very, you've been very articulate.
Yeah, you've been very helpful.
I just want to, I think it's like important that we invite, you know, I think that, I think, you know, Peter and Cat Patty both made really interesting comments tonight on, on some of the, some of the, some of, they're legitimate questions that we're going to figure out. And I think that the more that we encourage a public hearing, many voices that.
No, I, I wanted this discussion because in my experience, you know, we've had problems where there wasn't some process and there wasn't, you know, people. I don't actually personally feel that town meeting is always the best place to be making decisions on some of these complicated zoning matters. And I've heard from residents that they voted on things that they subsequently ended up regretting voting on because they didn't understand them.
Yeah.
And so, um, my goal was to just, you know, have, have some discussions so people have a chance to, you know, ask the questions and, and absorb it. And so we, I, my hope is that we don't have one of these situations that then blows up on us after it's been passed by town meeting, if it is passed by town meeting. And we've seen that happen with amendments to the Coggejera state bylaw. And, you know, so I'm, I'm hoping to avoid that. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So, um, any other, Carl, anyone else? Liz, Marie, Nancy? Gary, you look tired.
We won't be talking about VRBOs, right? Because I think there's some confusion with, um, you know, like one of the people were asking.
Thank you, Patrick.
Like people that live down on the bowl and they say they have an apartment, they have their home, and then they have, if they have, when you rent in there, can they rent that out as a vacation rent by owner? As part of their home, can they, you know? I think there's some confusion with that.
If it's inside their home, it's by right.
Right. So how do, we don't know that they're renting it out as a vacation rent by owner or if it's a legitimate ADU. We don't know.
Unless you go on VRBO and look.
Well, short-term rental.
Like Laura said, a lot of times it gets rented otherwise.
Right.
But I don't know how much that happens.
Well, if it's, it's in their home, it's by right. But the, the zoning bylaws apply, correct?
Are you talking short-term rental?
Yeah, but remember, if your home has a separate kitchen, that's the defining thing.
Right, that's.
You can basically have like, you know, a suite of rooms that you, when you renovate your house, that nobody, there's no prohibition on. So people rent rooms out for Airbnbs all the time. And some of the numbers I quoted for the Airbnbs include people who rent homes, rent rooms in their home. It's not just people who have kind of rented the whole house out, but that's mostly more here.
So that's not an ADU.
That's not an ADU.
It's just a rental, right.
It's to be a separate entrance, it's defined in there, separate entrance or shared entrance with separate doors, you know, it has to have a kitchen. There's like two or three conditions that define it.
And the bill, they have to get a building permit to do that.
Of course.
Correct.
So with that separate entrance, if it's part of the house, they need to meet the existing bylaw requirements?
I would think so.
The egress requirements.
Egress, yeah.
If it has a separate entrance and, and a, and a second kitchen to qualify, to be an ADU. Otherwise, it's just basically a back door.
And a room.
And, but, but in that case, they need to meet our existing bylaw requirements.
Well, they all do.
Yeah, I don't think.
I don't think this has anything to do with any of the kind of mass and footprint. You can't, you can't expand to create an ADU if it violates the mass of the law. Those are existing rules.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think probably one of the recommendations I'd like to see is just reinforcing that so that it's really clear.
I think the, I think the bylaw is pretty, it says, it says that.
Yep. Where?
Somewhere. No, but it's not, you know, you, 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 you can't, it's very specific. You can't expand.
Right. Any new building or structure shall conform to all adopted state and town laws, bylaws, codes, and regulations.
Where, where is that again, Liz?
501 and number two.
And. And, uh.
I, I just think it should be upfront. I like it more. Yeah, yeah. I don't, I think that's something that's kind of buried, but that's my opinion.
Well, no, but then, I mean, also, I mean, and maybe I'm misreading this, but, you know, it says, once, um, F here, once an accessory dwelling unit has been added to a single-family residence or lot, the accessory dwelling unit shall never be enlarged beyond the 900 square feet allowed by this bylaw ordinance.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of, a couple of like asterisks to that one, which is that if it, if it's a, if it's one, where there's a little bit of concern around disability, they can go a little over.
Yep.
And I think that there's a question of if it's within 90 feet, then you could still permit. Within 9, 10%, which would be a maximum of 90 feet, you could still permit. See, I have a little bit of wriggled words aboard, you know? But once again, if you take those things out, you don't like them.
100 square feet isn't that big.
It's not.
No, it's like, 5,000 square feet are ready.
I guess I just live in a small house.
Wouldn't be able to have a very big ADU. The poor person would be living in a small house. Yes, sir.
All right.
Any others?
I think that's, I think that's it. I, I sort of feel this board running out of steam for this meeting. So I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.